Good evening. Welcome to the irregular City Council Meeting, amended agenda, Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. This is going to be a little different for us. We've not had a meeting like this without a crowd in front of us, and I'll go over some of the instructions about calling in and emailing in after the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could please rise for that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Roll call, please.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Judy Ann Fyles.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Josie Coulter.
Present.
All of our City Council members are present, and our Youth Council representative is present electronically.
Fantastic. And Mayor Protam, changes to the agenda, including additions and deletions, please.
Yes, we have quite a few additions and deletions tonight. This new agenda was posted on the city's website yesterday afternoon and is available. You're gonna go, the mayor will go over some of the rules about how we can do public comment, so I'm gonna focus on the agenda items. Agenda item seven, the Youth Council report to City Council is postponed. Oh, let me start back up, I'm sorry. Number five, Census Day, City Council and Youth Council proclamation, that is postponed until a time where they can be here. And then their Youth Council report to City Council, that is postponed as well. Number 12, Ordinance 2498, second reading, this has been postponed. Number 14, emergency ordinance 2500 has been added. And that is it for additions and deletions from tonight's agenda. Thank you.
And individuals wishing to provide public comment during this meeting are encouraged to call 970-240-1404, or email citicler@cityofmontrose.org. Those who call in will be asked to state their name and address, and will be allowed three minutes to speak. Email comments will be read into the record. And I think we need for, if you are listening to this on a computer or TV, you might need to mute that so that we don't have that coming over the phone at the same time. So, again, this is the first time any of us have ever done this. We're gonna do absolutely the best job we can tonight to do what we need to do as City Councilors, and to have the public have input into this meeting, that's also is equally as important as what we do. So with that, we will proceed. I guess we'll open it up to see if there's anything that anybody would like to call in about before we get into the agenda. You hopefully have the agenda, and you can see what we are discussing tonight. The call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither the city staff nor ci, excuse me, City Council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel and employment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct that violates state or local law and shall not be permitted. I guess we'll wait a minute or two and see if anybody wants to address us, and then we'll move on. Okay. If somebody does call, we're gonna have to be flexible this evening, giving the situation, so we're gonna do the best we can to make sure everybody that wants to be heard is heard tonight. And with that, we have the approval of minutes. City Council consideration of the minutes of March 3, 2020, special City Council meeting and the March 3, 2020, regular City Council meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I second.
And that passes unanimously. Number nine, ordinance 2495, second reading. City Council consideration of ordinance 2495 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado regarding the noxious weed management program for the City of Montrose. Jim Scheid, Public Works Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you said, this is the second reading of this ordinance and the final reading, so I'll go over a few points of it again and be happy to answer any questions that may have come up. So we generated this program to update our previous weed management plan and kind of clarify some of the responsibility between city and property owners. So we followed our code specifically, Chapter 6-5. We worked with our code enforcement and our police department to make sure we're on the same page and delivering a consistent message between us. We're also following guidelines in the State of Colorado Weed Act, which is what requires this council to adopt this through ordinance. And ultimately, the point of the program was to offer more clarification and more detail to our operation and all of the noxious weeds in our city. It also offers a means for people to get on a no-spray list, so that's how, if people are interested, this program explains how to do that. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from anybody?
I have a question about the no-spray list. So they, it starts over every January 1st, and I would assume that you're getting to the time of year where you start spraying. If I was a homeowner and I really wanted to make sure that my property was on the no-spray list, about how much more time do I have to get in and get that paperwork before you start spraying?
Really, right now. We are starting up this week, actually, so, yeah, if you're interested in being on the no-spray list, you need to come into Public Works, or actually, at this point, I'd be calling into Public Works as soon as possible.
So kind of under the circumstances, you would take a phone call instead of them coming in?
Yeah, we would fill out, there's an agreement, but we can fill it out for somebody that may call in, so we can, we can do it remotely.
And what's the Public Works phone number?
You can call 240-1480 would be the best way to get hold of us.
Okay, thank you.
You addressed all my questions. Thank you.
Jim, I like the list that you gave out of the Colorado noxious weeds, and I see those, but I don't know what they look like. Is there any place that I can go find pictures of these?
There are, actually. If you look up the Colorado Noxious Weed Act, they supply that A-list and B-list on their website, and there's pictures with them. And it's also on our website as well, included with this program, our pictures as well.
Thank you very much.
Any more questions? I would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2495 on second reading as presented.
I was just gonna say, was there public comment?
I asked for it.
Did you?
We can, if you'd like to wait longer.
No, I was, I missed it, so I'll second the motion.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously. And number 10, ordinance 2496, City Council consideration of ordinance 2496 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, designating the Missouri Building 347 East Main Street, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to Chapter 4 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. Assistant City Manager, Anne Morgan Thaler, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. You reviewed the first reading of this ordinance at your last meeting on March 3rd, and nothing has changed since the first reading of the ordinance. This is for designation of a historic building. The owner approached us and asked to designate their building, and 347 is the building that currently has The Vine Restaurant in it. And at the last meeting, we gave a detailed presentation about some of the interesting history of that site and also of the building, and I won't go through that tonight unless you'd like for us to pull it up, but we're happy to present it again, and if you approve this on second reading, then that building will be designated as a historic building. And just to note that the next item on this agenda is sort of a partner application with this one. They actually are one building, but we're designating them as two because they have different histories and different architectural stories.
Right. Any comments from council?
I just, I have a question. So when historic buildings are designated, there's a local designation, and that's what this is. The state designation or a federal designation is a completely separate process.
That's correct. This is a local designation, and so if council, for example, chose to have incentives for our local historic preservation program, it would likely be connected in one way or another to local designation. And then buildings may also be designated at a state and a national level, and those are both different processes. So when council adopted our historic preservation ordinance, it made it possible for us to locally designate these properties, and we're getting started, so this would be our third and fourth building in the City of Montrose.
And they're designated historic by the city, but the owner of the building has requested it. The city didn't come in and say, "We want to designate your building."
Correct. It's voluntary, and the owner applies for designation. We communicate with property owners and explain what we think the benefits are of designation, but we do not initiate that process without the owner's consent, and right now, really without them initiating it themselves.
Thank you.
One of my earliest memories in life is when I was either three or four, being in the dentist office, which is up above on the corner there. So, obviously, it qualifies as a historic building. That was a long time ago.
What year was that?
Judy Ann Fyles was here.
What year was that?
Let's see, it would have been 70 years ago.
We'll pause for just a second or two, if there's any comments from our audience out there. Public comment is certainly welcome. There are no phones ringing. With that, I would entertain a motion, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2496 on the second reading as presented.
I'll second that. And that passes unanimously. Number 11, ordinance 2497, second reading. City Council consideration of ordinance 2497 on second reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, designated the Block Building 345 East Main Street, Montrose, Colorado, as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to Chapter 4 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. And again, Anne, please.
Thank you again. This is the partner application that I mentioned, so this part of that building is, has a different address, and it's where Maggie's Books is right now, and different history than the adjacent building, but also qualifies for designation. And you reviewed the ordinance on first reading at your last meeting, and this would be the second reading, and if you approve this tonight, then the building would be designated on our local registry, as we just discussed. Please let me know if you have any questions.
I just want to say, I'm gonna really miss Maggie's Books here in a couple months. Sarah's given it a valiant effort. It will be missed downtown, so, sorry to see it go, but Sarah, thanks for the effort. Any comment from the audience? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to adopt ordinance 2497 on second reading as presented.
I'll second.
Ordinance 2498 has been postponed. There may be some discussion now or at the end, or what's your pleasure? I think let's just wrap all that up at the end, then. Number 13, ordinance 2499, first reading. City Council consideration of ordinance 2499 on first reading, an ordinance of the City of Montrose, Colorado, vacating three rights-of-way deemed surplus. And again, Assistant City Manager, Anne Morgan Thaler, please.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is an item that you discussed at the last work session, but this is the first time you're reviewing it at a council meeting, and it's to vacate portions of the right-of-way. And right-of-way are portions of the street, so when you look at this map, you'll see that on page 270 of your packet, there's an overview of the parcel where our current police department is, and it's outlined in yellow, and there are some portions of the right-of-way that are included in that parcel. And these would be vacated to accommodate a large site that would give flexibility when you design the police department and decide where buildings will go on the site. So that has not been determined yet where all the buildings will go, but this gives flexibility for lots of different arrangements. And the way that council may vacate portions of the right-of-way is through ordinance, so that's what you're considering now. If you vacate these portions of the right-of-way, then administratively, we could do a subdivision in order for these portions of the right-of-way to be incorporated into a site where you could then place buildings on those portions of the right-of-way.
And I'm gonna start the hearing right now, and is there any comments from council?
I have, I guess, a question, Anne. I've had some people question me as to what that word "vacate" means. So is there a generic description for "vacate"? You know, I've tried to tell people, "It doesn't mean it's going on vacation. It's not going away," whatever. What does "vacate" mean?
It's a term of art. Think vacant lot? It's the same base word, that we are vacating the use of it for our right-of-way. So it's a legal term, but no, I kind of like the thought of the lot taking, or the right-of-way taking a vacation.
So it comes from the word vacant?
Yes. It's just nothing there that we are, give, what we're doing is that we're giving it back to the property owner. We vacate in alleys quite frequently, and the law says if a right-of-way is vacated, it goes back to the adjacent property owners. In this case, it happens to be the city.
Thank you.
I think it makes more sense when you think of it as an alley and then private property on either side.
So if we, if the police building never went into that right-of-way, would the city kind of reclaim it as, in the future, as a right-of-way, or would we just leave it vacated?
So, the primary purpose for the vacation is with the borrowing, the COP issuance, because we don't know exactly where the building's going to sit. We errred on the side of caution, as Anne was mentioning, to make it a little wider in each direction and to just square up the edges. And so after the building's all done, we can still use "vacated" right-of-way for those types of purposes. We'll just work through the legal process to reestablish that right-of-way, so it's not taking that away from us forever, but because of the way the COPs work, the ownership of that property, the money that we borrow, can't be spent on property that's owned by the city, and so that would go into that trust, and so everything within those is eligible for a building to go on it. And then we would work with legal and planning at that time. That's why it's important for people to know, we haven't decided to close South First Street. That was some scuttlebutt out on the internet and things. We have decided to close Uncompagre, because we have to have a building in that area, but the area out into half of South First is just in case through the design process, everyone, including the input from the community and council and everyone who's part of the process, decides to build the police department out a little bit into what is currently South First. It gives us the ability to do that, and then we have lots of options available to us on how we handle the, is it pedestrian-only enclosed? Is it one-way traffic? Is it two-way traffic, but it's narrower? There's a lot of different things that it gives us the flexibility to achieve.
Okay, great explanation. Thank you very much.
Any more comments from council? Any comments from the audience? Hearing none, I'll close the hearing, and entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2499 on first reading.
I'll second that. And that passes unanimously. Item number 14, emergency ordinance 2500. City Council consideration of emergency ordinance 2500, an emergency ordinance of the City Council of the Mon, City of Montrose, Colorado, extending the city manager's declaration of a public health emergency. City Manager, Bill Bell, please.
So as all of us know, because we were all here during that time, we, Police Chief and I and staff worked together this weekend, and with our county partners as well, and the county public health and a variety of agencies in the community, and we did declare the state of emergency, which now it's only allowed up to seven days on behalf of the city manager. Without City Council's approval, it would end after that seven days, and so we are asking City Council to consider this extension through the entire emergency period, and so that'll be driven a lot by the federal government, the state government, all the state agencies, the governor himself. A lot of what we're doing is mandated by either the governor or other state agencies, and the CDC's input as well, so we're just asking City Council to extend that state of emergency throughout the life of the pandemic, and then we will close that at the appropriate time. That allows us to have the flexibility of, once we declared the state of emergency, we started tallying hours worked on the pandemic, staff that's being provided to the Emergency Operations Center with the county, and then all of the work that we're doing to try to get information out to our businesses, partnering with Region 10 and with the state, OEDIT and DOLA. We can calculate all that time, and then we can also apply on behalf of businesses and residents for FEMA assistance, if that becomes available, the SBA assistance for businesses, some of the OEDIT assistance that's coming out, Region 10. So it gives us the flexibility to help residents and businesses, and really anyone in our community by having that state of emergency been declared. So we're asking tonight just to extend that out. But we can answer, we know some public didn't watch that meeting or hear about it, so ask any questions you'd like regarding the declaration. It's been included in there as well.
I have a question about when it ends and who decides when the public health emergency is over, and does it take a vote of council to end it? Like hypothetically, what if I thought this was over next week? Can I come forward and if a majority of council agrees? Like, can you tell me more about ending it?
Yeah, it's a similar process to declaring it, so in our code and our charter and in a lot of Colorado communities, because it's a council-manager form of government in a lot of communities, even City of Denver with the strong mayor, it has to follow the same process. I declare the emergency. You can extend it for a longer period of time, but then I would close the emergency as well.
And then do we vote after that, or you just are able to call it?
We're able to just stop it, but at this point, we're all a team, and so we were, we're of course in the know on all of this stuff, together with staff and City Council.
Bill, could you just comment a little on how that ties in with the county and any declarations they will do?
So the county, I believe, made their declaration yesterday, and so it, really, they're two totally separate things. The county has their declaration, and they follow their, the way they wrote theirs, very similar to ours, because it all relates to statute, even though our home rule, in this case, emergency declarations, all of those things are covered by states, state law. So it's very similar to theirs, but their language is a little bit different based on their stylistic approach to drafting things versus ours, but very similar.
And the Fire District has also issued a similar declaration?
Correct.
Josie, I've been neglectful in asking your opinion on any of this. From a youth standpoint, any questions about this that you might have?
Um, I don't know. I had, my question was very similar to how, I was just confused on how ending the declaration would be done, but I, my question was answered, so.
Great, thank you. And again, I apologize. Got a little confusing today.
Don't worry.
Thanks. Anything else from council?
I want to revisit the answer to my question, Bill. So you said the city manager would end it, but then I want to take it one step further. You've often said that you answer to a majority of council is how, is how it works. So if a majority of council came to you and said, "It's time to end it," that, if you hadn't already decided to end it, I just want to, I just don't want it to seem like it's open-ended and that the people who are elected, but now he's talking to the attorney. I just want to make sure it is an open-ended and that our community feels like the decision rests with one person who unilaterally gets to decide, because I know that's not how it works.
In my quick conference with legal advice, you're issuing the extension, so you could rescind that at any time with a majority vote, but, yeah.
I mean, it would be more, hopefully, it's just really obvious when.
Would it be a majority vote or unanimous vote?
It would be a majority vote. The only reason it's a unanimous on this one is it's an emergency ordinance, so it'd be a, a majority vote, you know? Council would say, "Hey, city attorney, we think it's time to end this. Draft an ordinance." It would have to go through two votes, or it could go to one as an emergency, and it need to be unanimous.
Thank you. I just want to make sure people under, hopefully, it's just really obvious when it's over, but I don't want them to think that one person unilaterally gets to make that decision without the input of people they've elected.
Yeah, and I think.
I know that it doesn't work.
And I think we'll be looking heavily at the state and going off their cues, just like we relied on their guidance and lead on enacting this.
Yeah, in county.
How's the emergency management, county emergency management team? You guys are part of that. How does that work into this?
I think Police Chief Hall should probably talk to that piece, because he's been delegated the responsibility of being our emergency manager for this, and has the closest contact with the county's EOC.
So we're working very closely with the county. The county on Monday started up a Level 2 EOC, which, to give you some context, a Level 3 EOC is the lowest level of Emergency Operations Center that a governmental entity can, can start up. A Level 2 is usually pretty standard in these types of situations as they unfold or large weather events. A Level 1 EOC has only happened four times in the history of the United States, and for instance, one of those Level 1 EOCs was stood up for Hurricane Katrina. So that kind of gives you some context. So, starting yesterday, the EOC is hosting a morning call-in meeting, where I think everyone is trying to practice that social distancing that we're preaching to the public to practice, and so that starts at 8:00 AM. Myself is, will be and always will be part of that morning briefing meeting, and in that meeting, we discuss the daily events. We discuss any challenges that the different partners within the region may be having, to include the hospital, Health and Human Services, the city, the county, but it's really led by Scott Hawkins, who's the emergency manager for the county, and then also by the county's Public Health Department, so their supervisor is Jim Austin. So we discussed the events and the challenges. One of the main things that has been really helpful is that we have a direct tie-in to the Colorado cache of supplies from municipalities, in this case, for things like N95 masks, for things like surgical gowns, for PPE gloves, things like that. And Scott's been working with us to try to supply us with those items. Although I can say our city team has been excellent in also trying to find a lot of those same items as we deal with this. And you can imagine that we're, we're really using a lot of PPE right now. So we've also assigned some of our communications team to the EOC. That would be William Woody and Caitlin Love. And they're part of the PIO section of the EOC. And they, they actually form in relationship with the county, like Katie Jurgensen, the JIC, and that's the Joint Information Center. And so what their really task or goal is, is to make sure that all the information that's coming in goes out with one central message. And messaging is really important. And I can tell you that as this thing started Monday, I think having a standard unified message coming out of, of, you know, the EOC or Public Health has been a little bit of a challenge. But the city has been excellent in trying to provide resources, webpages, trying to collate all that information for a landing page to try to get some of that out. And then also the county is directing the public to go to the Colorado Department of Health's website to get the most current information. That's probably a really long-winded answer to your question, Doug.
Thank you.
It's important to note, though, that this just didn't happen last week. I know Blaine, you and I started attending these meetings with the emergency management team at least six years ago. And we have talked through a lot of the things. I think we all thought it would probably be a natural emergency, meaning a flood or a fire. But we know this team has practiced doing the drive-through flu shots. It's been great practice for how to do that. You've worked well with the police department, Jim Shied with Public Works. So that the city has all been involved in this for years.
Correct. And, and since I have the podium, if you will, we are encouraging the public, if they feel that they have been exposed or that they have the symptoms that go along with COVID-19, they are to call their healthcare provider. Do not call Montrose County Public Health because there's a certain screening process. Now, as of today, there is now an outside testing facility that's located at the PIC place. And really what that consists of is a parking space and a tent. And so if your healthcare provider believes that you should be screened for first influenza A and B and some of those other things that would cause a fever, they're going to direct you to that facility first, unless you have more immediate emergency care needs. And then they will test you for all the other things first to make sure that if you test positive for one of those, then most likely it's not COVID-19. If you test negative for all of those, then they will give you a COVID-19 test. And the, the lead time on that now to get that result could be up to five days. As you can imagine, the state lab is, is starting to get pretty inundated. So, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions from council? Do we have anything from the public?
We have an email from Charlie Oswald at 2032 Otter Pond Circle. She said she, I opposed this, I think when they were talking about the city manager ending the emergency. She said city council is representative of their constituents. This would take this representation away. It should be a decision of the entire council.
So noted, thank you.
It is important to note that this absolute one that we're working on today is unanimous. All five of us will be signing on this. This is not majority. Pardon?
This, this has to be unanimous.
It has to be, there's no choice.
Right, because we're only reading it one time. Normally, we don't pass an ordinance in only one reading. We would have two readings, but under an emergency, we, we read it once, but it has to be unanimous.
But council has not voted yet, would be my point.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah, that's why I said has to be.
For it to pass tonight, we have to have unanimous vote. With that, any other emails? And nothing on the phone, so I.
I'll make a motion to adopt emergency ordinance 2500 as presented.
I'll second it.
Please vote. And that is unanimous. All councils will be signing this emergency declaration. And from here on out, until we change that, we are totally officially under an emergency declaration. And Resolution 2020-05, City Council consideration of Resolution 2020-05, approving the filing of a grant application with the History Colorado State Historical Fund in order to fund rehabilitation of the Montrose Potato Growers Association Building. I'm going to guess maybe, Ann's taking this?
Yes, thank you. In an effort to minimize the number of people, excuse me, in the room this evening, I'll be presenting on behalf of Kendall Kramer tonight. But he has been working long and hard with the owners of the Potato Growers Building to present for your consideration this grant application. We're requesting your consideration to file a grant on behalf of High Oasis LLC. They're the owners of the Potato Growers Building at 39 West Main Street with the History Colorado State Historical Fund for up to $200,000. These grant funds would be used for stabilization, updating, an addition and replication of the historic decks around the building, potential demolition of metal clad addition on the north side of the building in order to expose the building's original form, a main entry door replication that's on the south side of the building, that's the main entry, steel H-frame reinforcement at the other door openings, barn door storefront replacement, window replication, and historic exterior masonry repointing. And I think previously we've talked about repointing, but it's an interesting way of repairing the bricks and the mortar around the bricks. As a private entity, High Oasis LLC must provide at least a one-to-one match of the total grant amount. And it's likely for this project that the applicant will be providing more than a one-to-one match. So this is an expensive undertaking. We expect it'll cost more than $400,000 to do this work. This building served a vital role in our community in making Montrose a regional hub for agriculture. It was completed in 1908, but since the 1960s has remained underutilized and it fell into disrepair. We've all driven by it, I think, or walked by it and saw that there wasn't a roof for a period of time. But the fisherings, the current owners, have done a lot of work on it recently. They have invested over $435,000 to date in order to stabilize the building. They've replaced the roof, the floor, and the associated support system inside. I'll mention, the owners were not able to come tonight and they elected to not call into the meeting, but they asked me to express to you their thanks for the city's support thus far, for the designation of their building as historic, and also for Kendall's work on this grant application. The city would not provide any cash as part of this project, but the city has provided Kendall services in helping them to apply for this grant. So that is the city's contribution. And we would also become the fiscal agent for this grant. So the money, if you approve for the application and if we get the grant, the money would come from the state historic fund to the city. And we would review the work that's completed on the building in order to make sure that it meets the criteria of the state historic fund. And then we could release the money to the contractor. So none of this money actually goes to the owners of the building. It can only go to the contractors, subcontractors, who've completed the work on the project. This resolution allows for the filing of the grant application and directs the city manager and staff to perform all steps necessary to execute a grant agreement with History Colorado upon a successful award of the grant.
Questions, comments? Oh, come on. Really?
Okay, I'll make a comment. So I, I think it's worth pointing out that this is a competitive grant application. So meaning lots of other cities or whatever are competing for these dollars. They're going to go to somebody and hopefully with Kendall's skill, they might come to Montrose. And again, you said, and I just want to reiterate, that the only contribution from the city itself is the time Kendall spends. And then if we got the grant, there'd be some management to just handle the funds and such. But no tax dollars would be going to this, whether or not we get it, except Kendall's time.
Correct.
Thank you.
Josie, any comment?
Um, no, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and I would entertain a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-05 as presented.
Second.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Number 16, Resolution 2020-06, City Council consideration of Resolution 2020-06, a resolution of the City of Montrose adopting an amended and restated intergovernmental agreement concerning the implementation of a E911 emergency telephone service. Police Chief Blaine Hall, please.
Good evening again. So I come before you tonight to present to you the agreement for the Montrose Emergency Telephone Service Authority. The reason that this agreement is being submitted to you tonight is that there were a few changes. The primary one in the agreement being the resolution of the Paradox Fire Department. And actually, they just rolled into a larger organization. So their, their paradox is still being for, served with fire services. And there were some other minor changes to the agreement. Nothing really substantial. This agreement comes before you, I think, about every two years. And this is something that we're asking council to adopt tonight so that we can access monies that are collected through the telephone authority to pay for our 911 lines, or I should say Wesco's 911 lines, to service the City of Montrose for emergency telephone service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This covers all of Montrose County, is that correct?
So the, the Montrose Emergency Telephone Service Authority does cover all of Montrose County, which also includes the City of Montrose. And I think it's, it's right around $200,000 that is, is covered in that, that Wesco uses for training and for upkeep and paying for their 911 lines. So yes.
I see by the page of signatures, this is more than just something that the City of Montrose decides to do. Everybody who's involved in getting this service, their councils have to also agree.
That's correct.
And there's quite a list of them.
Yes, that's correct. So this isn't something that only the City of Montrose has elected to do. This is something that all the entities and municipalities, counties within the Montrose Emergency Telephone Service Authority, they have to do this. So, you know, Chris Brody would be presenting this to his Mountain Village Council, no different than I'm doing here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Josie, anything you want to say on this?
Um, I'm just a little confused on what the, where they would be and what the purpose is, I guess.
I'll ask Chief Hall to give us a little explanation.
Yeah, so I'm confused myself.
It's, it's very, very technical. It is something we do every couple of years. We are a member of a board that oversees the 911 service for our general area. And all the communities that participate on this board have a vote and, and are charged a certain fee based on numbers of calls.
Yep. And then, and then all of, all of those funds go into essentially a pot of money that serves the 911 center, in this case, it would be Wesco, that services all of those communities. And that money can be used to pay for everything, service, maintenance, for the 911 lines. So once the 911 lines terminate at Wesco, inside the building, anything non-911 related is up to the municipalities or the counties to pay for that. So to be clear, Metza cannot pay for the entirety of Wesco's services. It's just 911 lines.
I think this is statewide, isn't it?
It is. So those, those fees, you see those fees on your telephone bill, on your wireless telephone bill. And those fees are controlled through the PUC. Everybody in Colorado pays those.
Does that help, Josie?
Yes, thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Thank you.
And any other questions, comments from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-06 as presented.
I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item 17, Resolution 2020-07, City Council consideration of Resolution 2020-07, setting April 21, 2020 as the hearing date for the 4152 North Townsend addition annexation. And again, Assistant City Manager Ann Morgan Thaler.
Okay, hi again, thank you. This is another item that you've reviewed at work session. And this is simply to set the date for this hearing. And so I won't go into the details of the application because you'll be reviewing this at a public hearing and making decisions related to the application. But we discussed the annexation process with you. And so we'll bring an application forward for you for this site. And you'll consider an annexation. And the applicant ideally will be here if we're having members of the public join us in the meetings too.
Thank you. Council?
Would we, would we, would we have the ability to put it off longer if we felt like we would not be able to get sufficient public comment in, in that format?
Yes. We stayed with the anticipated schedule at the applicant's request because they are interested in continuing along this timeline. So we propose that you schedule the hearing. And certainly if it's not, if you'd rather continue it, we can do that as well. But just so you know, that's why we are proposing that you schedule it.
Thank you. Anything else? Josie, what we're doing here is there's a piece of property north of town that would like to move from the county into the city. And this is sort of the beginning of that process. So with that, actually, I think we'll probably go ahead and just have a vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-07 as presented.
I'll second that. Please vote. And that passes unanimously. Item 18, Contract Award, West Main Underpass Decorative Shot Creek Wall. City Council consideration of the award of contract for construction of the Connect Trail West Main Underpass Decorative Shot Creek Wall. And we're going to have Jim Shied this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, I'm here presenting on behalf of Ryan and Scott. I can explain this a little bit as well. We did talk about it at work session and I believe Scott mentioned it even prior to that. But I'll, I'll attempt to explain it as well as they do. So this was part of our Connect Trail project. And there was originally a retaining wall as part of that project. But through construction and soil conditions, it kind of turned to where the original retaining wall wouldn't work. And so they had redesigned to a different process, and that's the shot creek, which creates the need for a specialty contractor. And so that's why we bid it out separately. And Mountain Valley Contracting is who use a subcontractor to do this specialty work. And that's the bids that were presented in the packet. So we're, we're recommending awarding to Mountain Valley Contracting because we have, well, the low price, of course, but also because we have a good working relationship with Mountain Valley Contracting. They've done. They've done many projects for us, and we're very confident in their ability to perform well at this one as well. So the important part is this was included in part of the original project that was approved back in December of 2018. Their council had awarded 2.82 million for this project, and that included the underpass retaining wall. And even with performing the specialty work, we're still projecting to come in under budget.
Great. Comments, questions? We've sort of talked about this, but...
Yeah, I know we talked about it, but I think it's just worth commenting again. Either Scott or Ryan explained that this was necessary because of the steepness of that wall. Whereas the one down on Townsend was a much gentler slope, didn't have these technical conditions, and didn't require this kind of a solution.
Yeah, there's a few reasons why. Definitely, one was the depth of the excavation here and the structural components of the bridge itself. The two bridges between West Main and Townsend are very different. And so the way they had to excavate to get the soil nails in was kind of a top-down approach. And what it created was a soil, and the retaining wall is not perfectly straight with the trail and the bridge. There's some, you know, contours because the soil is not rigid enough to hold a nice straight line. So the retaining wall would have been much thicker in some areas to accommodate that, to make it nice and straight. And that additional weight would have pulled it off of the hill. So basically, we're contouring to the existing soil and the soil nails instead of building a retaining wall aside from it.
Thank you.
I also think it's worth noting, since you mentioned that total contract of over $2 million, that this is a partner effort and included a $2 million co-grant.
That's right.
That total, that total contract is not being all paid by the City of Montrose.
That's right. Yeah, I know the grant funding and partnership funding for this project was over $2 million. I don't know the exact number, but I would say about half a million of that was from city funding.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Josie, anything you want to say about that underpass? I bet you ride over your, ride your bicycle over it all the time.
Yes, it is, I'm very excited about it, actually.
Great.
I'm, I'm excited for the opportunities that will open up for others, so.
Sweet, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Anybody going to call in? Then we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to award a contract to Mountain Valley Contracting an amount of $191,051.30, including a 10% contingency for construction of the Connect Trail West Main Underpass Decorative Wall.
I'll second it.
And let's vote. And that passes unanimously. Item 19, Contract Award, Owner's Representative for Police Department Project. City Council Consideration of a Professional Service Contract for an Owner's Representative for all phases of the new Police Department Project. And again, Jim Shide and Blaine Hall, or who's ever doing this.
I think we're both going to take a stab at it, but Jim needs to, you need to stand six feet away from me.
I agree.
You can see, if you're watching this, we have spread out tonight. We want to be good role models and sort of show public how, when necessary, folks can come together, but still say, still say safely.
Sure. So I come before you tonight to present the project management agreement for Dynamic Program LLC to perform owner's representative services for the City of Montrose for the new Police Department Facility Project. Just to give you a little background, we went through a competitive request for qualifications that occurred in April, I'm sorry, February. So I'm a little off my game tonight, so it's been, it's been a long couple of days. So actually, February 26th is when we interviewed two different firms, one being Dynamic and the other being NV5. And staff recommended to present to you tonight the contract for Dynamics Group. It should be noted that Owner's Rep Services is not something new to municipalities or counties when they embark upon a very large and massive building project. In this case, the Police Department Facility would be that kind of project. In our tours that some of you took with staff here a few months ago, we toured Steamboats Police Department that's been built fairly recently, Aspens, and also Parker Police Departments. And all of those municipalities used an owner's representative service to assist their municipality with that project. And I think I'm going to turn it over to Jim Shide so that I don't butcher exactly what an owner's rep does. And then if you have any questions for either of us, then we'll open it up.
So I may be able to kind of clarify a little bit more of what owner's rep does. But also, I believe Colleen with Dynamic is on the phone. So if there's any questions for her specifically, you're welcome to ask. So we kind of explained a little bit. The owner's rep works as an advisor to the city and represents the city in design development, construction implementation, and closeout procedures. And that's kind of a broad description of a million steps between here and there. One example would be one of the very first steps is compiling RFP to contract a design team in the format and delivery method that the city wishes to accomplish. The concept of what we're doing has been completed before, but we are, we do have a unique situation. And the way we're funding this, our community, is a unique situation. So that'll have to be compiled independently of other contracts. The RFP and the contract we developed for design team only will be different than it is in any other similar type of building. And that's where Dynamic comes in. And even after that, procuring a consultant for design, for example, and so on, until there's a functioning facility next door. So again, that takes millions of steps, but procuring a design team is just one of them. And throughout all those processes, Dynamic will be identifying and helping the city manage risk. So one of the most common types of risk that you may know about in construction is the opportunity to start building before your design is complete. So that's a risk, but there's a reward that goes with taking that risk, and that's in cutting the project timeline shorter and therefore saving some money. That's where Dynamic has experience with that, you know, scenario and how we can approach that, definitely helping us manage the risk and telling us what do we weigh and what do we consider? Would we do that or would we not? There's a lot of ways that they have come up with to be able to allow you to do things like to speed up the construction project and not take risk. So in that, in that, that's mostly, risk management is what they're here for, but they're doing that in every step, everything from design team through closeout, and there's a lot of it. And that came up, the work session, we discussed the difference between the owner's rep and Jim McLaren. Well, that may help explain a little bit more that Jim McLaren is a technical advisor regarding police operations and police facility needs in regard to the design of the facility and its function. Very different from what the owner's rep is doing in representing us and helping us manage risk. If that, if that helps. And if any other questions, I believe Colleen is on the phone, and she may be able to help.
Any questions from council, comments?
I'd just like to point out that this is coming out of the 2A budget.
Oh, Public Safety Fund.
Yes.
We did get the opportunity to meet with the representatives from this company two weeks ago at work session.
That's right.
And that really helped to be able to talk with them and ask questions. So I'm sorry they can't be here tonight. Hi, Colleen. But I feel really confident with what we learned two weeks ago.
Thank you.
I was going to say the complexity of this project, I think, just makes it absolutely necessary that we have this kind of expertise. And I believe the other police stations that we visited, as you talked with those leaders, that you found out this was something critical that we basically have to do. And this company, as our council lady files said, was very well qualified, and we had a great discussion with her, so.
Yeah, this is a very common practice.
I think it's good, too, to point out the fact that this, anytime you're building a station like this, there are a lot of federal requirements, so there are several things that we have to meet that would exceed many of our existing folks as far as knowledge base and where all that must go.
Yeah, that's right. This is a very complex building and a large building, so there'll be a lot of requirements that the Dynamic and Jim McLaren both will be able to help us figure out.
Thank you. And Josie, any comments, questions?
No, I just think I agree that the expertise is very important so that we can ensure the safety of the workers as well.
Good comment, thank you. And anything from the audience? Nothing? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a contract for providing the professional service of owner's representative for all phases of the new Police Department Project to Dynamic Program Management for a total sum of $404,341 as presented.
Second.
Please vote. And that passes unanimously. And with that, we're going to move to staff reports. Sales Use and Excise Tax Report. Finance Director Shani Wittenberg, please.
Good evening. So this report, finally into January of 2020, is Sales Use and Excise Tax Collections for 2020, January. So you're not going to see any year-to-date numbers because it's January. I added a few extra slides this time. This one is the 2019 Abstractive Assessment that the Montrose County Assessor puts out. I just copy and pasted a portion of it, so you can see the whole thing on the website. But I wanted to emphasize that the City of Montrose does not receive any revenue from property taxes. So you can see that under Cities and Towns. Montrose is the first one, assessed valuation of $322 million and zero revenue that we derive from that. City of Montrose, this January collection is from our community, city and county, adjacent counties, and then also our visitors that come to Montrose. The second slide I wanted to show you tonight and just put it out there and, you know, for anybody who's viewing this, to make any misconception of how much debt we actually have. In 2020, not, this is not include the COPs that we may issue in the next month or so, but we have just under $11 million in debt. 9.1 of that is the COPs we issued, or the lease purchase we issued, for the projects we did around town, the MoveMo.co projects, and then the public infrastructure out at Colorado Outdoors. And then the 2016 water and sewer revenue, we refunded that, and now it's a note, and it's just under $1.7 million. So just for clarification, if anybody has any questions about any of that, please feel free to call me. My number is 2401462. All right, so getting into the report, I did make a few modifications to this because this will be the first report you see the public safety sales tax numbers in. So I revised this title of this slide to say General Fund Sales and Use Taxes. So the General Fund Sales and Use Taxes collected at 3%. January compared to January of 2019, retail sales tax is up 1.8%. Construction use tax is up 154%. That's basically due to one large commercial company coming to town. Use and auto use tax is up 12.5%, and that's both on the use tax side from businesses and the auto use tax side. We didn't see that in 19 very much, but in January, we definitely did. Total collections up 6%, or positive budget variance of 8.3%, which is about $105,000. So here is the public safety sales and use tax. So in January, it was effective to collect 0.58% as approved by the voters on November 5th of 2019 to increase the staffing at the Police Department as well as construction of the new public safety facility. January sales and use tax for public safety came in at $266,270, which is a 9.1 positive budget variance. The budget for January was calculated at about $244,000. The Montrose Recreation District, this is another add-on tax, but basically, we are collecting 0.3% for the Montrose Recreation District to help assist with their new building that they built several years ago. In January, we collected almost $140,000, or 7.5% more than we collected in January of 2019. Excise taxes are 0.9% for hotel and 0.8% for restaurants. It's added to the tax base. Hotel excise tax is actually up 70.2% in dollars. That's not a huge amount of money, but it's a huge percentage. Restaurant excise tax is up 13% and total collections up 18.4%. Budget variance is a positive 23%.
Sometimes when something varies that much, and I understand the percentage is big, the dollar amount isn't. It's something very specific we can point to. Is there something very specific we can point to in this case?
I don't have anything specific, yeah. Retail sales enhancement, this is the vendor's fee that they, vendors voluntarily gave up in 1990 to fund retail sales in Montrose. And in January, we've collected $31,685, or 21.6% more than we did in 2019. With that, that's the January report.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Pretty good news.
The retail enhancement program dollars that come in go back out, right? Through the Office of Business and Tourism to help with local retail stores.
Correct.
It doesn't go to the general fund.
Correct, correct. It's a special revenue fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And with that, I'll turn it over to Bill Bell for public information report.
So there's a lot. But we've, we've put a lot of different press releases out. Just in the last couple of days, we've put a lot of posts on social media. We're buying box ads in both the Mirror and the Daily Press, and we'll continue to do that through the life of this pandemic just to make sure that all the information related to city services, information related to how the city with partners are helping the businesses in the community, how the county EOC is helping lead some efforts and city staff's providing some support to help the nonprofits in the community come together. I think Commissioner Hanson's helping lead that effort and just to rally the cry around people delivering food and all those types of things. So there is so much information, it's hard to know what to share right now. But I do want to share, anybody who's looking for city updates related to COVID-19 information, which talks about all of our closures, all of the partial closures, what city services are still operational, which is almost all of them, can go to www.cityofmontrose.org/covid19. So that will take you to the landing page on the website. You can also put in cityofmontrose.org, and that will take you there as well. But there's so much information, it's hard to know what to talk about. But I do want to at least highlight the section of our document that we released that talks about city services and just spend a couple of minutes talking about that. With anything like this, there's always rumors and speculation and just people talking and different things. So we want to make sure that people know the City of Montrose is trying to get through this with the least amount of impact on our customers as possible. And so almost all of our city services are still available. They just might be delivered in a different way than customers are used to. So for example, rather than coming in the front of City Hall, the doors are closed. People who would normally visit us at City Hall to do things like pay their utility bills, set up new utility accounts, meet with our planning and services people, our building official. meet with our planning and services people, our building official, our planners talking about potential developments, coming in to get things like sign permits, fence permits, some of those types of things or just to get advice, can still do those things, but they need to go to the visitor center building. So the building we're in, the Elk Civic Building, 107 South Cascade. And they can come in and we've taken the wall in the visitor center that had all glass and we replaced a few of those glass panels with a talk-through system and a tray. And so we're able to do municipal court operations right there where people can come in and handle their, paying of their fines and those types of things. People can handle their utility business. They can talk to the staff that's there and leave plans and documents and building blueprints and all those types of things can be done right out of this building. And we have that idea from a council member, Doug Glassbell, who I want to give credit to. The staff thought that was an ingenious idea. We were just walking out of the meeting this weekend and Doug said, hey, what about this? And we made it happen thanks to our facilities crew and our partners at Chuck's Glass. Because we have a great relationship with them, I called Tony Sanchez up on Sunday and he said, no problem, we'll make that our first project Monday morning and, and they were here right when they opened. So we really want to give a shout out to them. And, and just goes to show, there's many other businesses that are coming together right now, tons of nonprofits and volunteers, people who can't do a lot of other things at the moment to help, but they can provide in-kind support. And so we really want to say thanks for that idea to council member Glassbell, but also thanks to our partners over at Chuck's Glass. So people can still come and do a lot of that business. We also are going to virtual meetings and so we're going to carry on our DART activities with the downtown Main Street program. We're going to continue to host our committee meetings, but we're going to do that using Zoom and video conferencing or calling in and just doing it over old-fashioned speaker phones. We're meeting internally instead of gathering a bunch of people in one room in a tight space. We're calling each other and doing it over a conference phone and, and trying to limit maybe two or three people in a room at the most. And, and that's what we're encouraging people to do around the community as well. And it's important for people to know that even the tourists will be able to stop into the front door of the visitor center and have self-service visitor center activities where they can grab brochures. There's tons of brochures from across the region and our visitor guide is in there as well. And then the police department, of course, is still operational and they can, if people need to interact with the police officers, they do it in the same way that they did before. They just will be talking to people behind glass and not a lot of face-to-face interaction where you're getting close to each other and that type of thing. But if there's questions on those types of things, reach out to Police Chief Hall and he'd be happy to answer any of those questions. Clerk's office functions are still there. Lisa's able to take most of her, or actually all of her permit applications and, and those types of things over the phone and over the email. We are limiting the access to city facilities for four weeks. And so for people that had reservations in the centennial room for meetings or at the Pavilion Event Center, actually, most people canceled their own events, but at the Pavilion, Park Shelter reservations, those types of things, Lion's Clubhouse, those are being delayed four weeks. And so anybody who had reservations, Lisa or her staff has contacted them to, to just put that on hold and we'll reevaluate our circumstances after four weeks. That puts us to, I think you told me today, around April 10th and the school closure ends if everything's great right after that as well. But just like the governor and everyone else, it's a moving target. So what we say four weeks today, by next week, that could change and that could be postponed or, or be over quicker. So please, if you have any questions at all about how to interact with the city, you can call my cell phone at nine seven oh nine zero one eight five eight zero. You can call the city clerk directly at nine seven oh two four zero one four zero four. Or you can call Ann, our assistant city manager, who's going to tell me her cell phone number right now.
Nine seven zero nine zero one six zero five nine.
Thank you very much. Just call us and ask and we'll point you in the right direction. Go to our website and you can get all of this information. We're also just look at, look on our Facebook page, check social media. It's going to, rather than doing the one and done posts like we're accustomed to, we're going to be regenerating the same information and every day adding more information to that. So if you missed one post, I think the OBT who now isn't doing visitor services is doing full-time information work. At noon and 5:00 PM, they're going to be releasing a flood of information out on social media and they'll do that every single day. But I can also answer any questions or if I miss something that anybody in the room wants to add. Yes. Do you want to talk about the election? Just so I don't get it wrong? Okay, our city clerk wants to talk about the election, which is still happening.
Exactly. We want to make sure people vote. You should start getting your ballots probably tomorrow. If you didn't receive them today, it'll be tomorrow or Thursday. Anyone who does not receive a ballot and thinks they should, should call me directly. My direct line is nine seven oh two four oh one four two two. And we'll figure out if you're eligible to get a ballot and, and make sure you get one if you're eligible to. Figure out why you didn't get the, the one that was potentially mailed to you, but we do want you to reach out, please. We want to have high participation even in these difficult circumstances. Election Day is still April seventh and our, we're encouraging people to either mail their ballot back or put it in the drop box outside of the old county building on South First Street, right across from the post office. That way it kind of limits contact with people. Just drop it in that drop box. We'll pick it up and process it. We are not going to have a, a, a public gathering for the election announcements this year because of these circumstances. So we will, as soon as we have the results, we'll post them on our website and we'll post them on the doors of city hall as we're required to do. But anyone with questions, please call and we're happy to answer them. Thank you.
I had a few things Ann just reminded me I forgot. The Black Canyon Golf Course is still open. We act, are you going to talk about that? Okay, and the window piece, the customer service window piece?
Well, I'm just going to, at the golf club course or?
Yeah.
I talked to Tom, yes.
Okay.
I can, I can talk about.
Okay, great. And then just to let everybody know, their city water is safe to drink. Please continue to drink city water and it's, and we're going to keep that service up. Your sewer, hopefully, your toilet's still flushing and the sewer system's still operating. We're not cutting those services. And the wastewater treatment plant's going to be in operation, so, and trash and recycling. So continue your trash just like you would. The one thing I do want to mention that I just remembered is the green waste. Rather than taking your green waste to our Public Works facility, we're taking it to the old green waste facility, which is right next to Kinnickin, right there on Park Avenue, big empty lot that the city owns. It's properly signed right now, so you can't miss it. And you'll be able to drop your green waste off there. We know it's that time of year where that's really important. And then our crews will be going and cleaning that up on a regular basis every week. So it doesn't become a big mess and please know it's only temporary. Once this is all done, we'll go back to our, our green waste site that's out at Public Works.
And we pulled one item from the agenda or postponed that had to do with buying the COPs. Given the economic market, can you maybe just touch on that and, and help some of us that don't understand bonds, understand what is happening?
Sure. I, I don't know how much I understand about that, but we have people for that. So DA Davidson, who we're partnering with, they're, and they're working with the bond underwriters and the bond attorneys. They, because of the fluctuation in the markets in between our first reading and what would have been the second reading tonight, they've asked that we postpone that to March 31st council meeting, hoping that a lot of it was reactionary in the market. And so what was happening is people were selling all their municipal bonds, which was creating a saturated market. And then that gives you higher interest rates. And so I think over a two or three-day period, the borrowing rate went up by a whole percentage point. And so they're hoping that that reactionary impulse kind of levels out and corrects itself by March 31st and that it can go back down to that awesome, I mean, it's still a good rate, but we had an awesome rate as of a couple of weeks ago. So just buying us a little more time. It doesn't delay the timeline at all. So we were, it was actually really good that we had another meeting in March rather than holding it on April 7th during the election. We moved it up to March 31st. It actually works in our favor on this because we can still stay on the sale timeline, which is to price it out in April and sell it first week of May. Unless they tell us something right before March 31st. And we'll take their advice on that. They're the experts and, and they're working with Shani on that.
Thank you. And Ann or Stephen have anything they'd like to add? Then I'll come back to count unless staff, anybody? Doug?
I'd just like to thank the staff on getting both the physical signage out and electronic material they're doing. And I know you guys are putting in a lot of hours, but it's looking great out there.
It's all down to me?
How do you want to do it? You're going to go last. Okay, so yeah, I just want to commend Bill and the whole staff for this enormous effort you've put in to deal with this unfortunate situation. And I also just wanted to take a moment, things are very serious, but it is St. Patrick's Day. And even though you can't go to your favorite pub, at least do something with your family and enjoy the rest of the evening and celebrate a little bit as best you can. So I wish you all a happy St. Patrick's Day.
I will just take this opportunity to say that the forum programming has been suspended right now. We originally canceled for two weeks and now we've made a decision just to postpone and we'll let folks know when we resume. I sent out an email this afternoon and included kind of some general information from the city and the county and just as resources of what to do in this time. But thanks to everybody who is part of the forum and who looks forward to it. I'm going to miss seeing you all, but we'll, we'll be back stronger than ever at the right time.
Thank you. Josie, are you still there?
I am.
Do we have anything from youth council? I know you guys had a rock the rec that sounded like it was a lot of fun. Anything you can tell us about youth council right now?
Um, we had a rock the rec. Our upcoming one, we are canceling due to the COVID-19 situation. We are having a meeting tomorrow, a call-in meeting, and we are working with Bethany Maher for the census and trying to get that all put together.
Very good. Even with school out, you boys and girls are working really hard for our city and I appreciate it. That's great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And I guess you can feel the city sort of slowing down right now and it's good to see a lot of people have taken it upon themselves to stay home and be with their family and not be out and about and help each other stay safe. But Saturday or Sunday afternoon, my wife and I went for a walk on the Connect Trail and there were just lots of people spread out bumping elbows. It's really wonderful that we have the park system and the trail system that we have in Montrose because a lot of people had a lot of foresight. So stay home, but you know, if it's a nice day, don't, don't feel afraid to get out, take a walk, walk the dog, whatever. Enjoy the sunshine. On Monday, the grandkids and I went golfing. Montrose Black Canyon Golf Course is open for business. It will stay open for business. There's going to be some difference at the pro shop. They're trying to minimize human contact as best we can. We may be doing some of the things outside on the porch, but it is open. One thing you might notice, and this actually happened Monday afternoon while we were playing, all of a sudden the flagpole started disappearing from the holes and I didn't see any gophers, but all of a sudden they were gone and I asked Tom Young, that is so that if a golfer grabs that flag, doesn't contaminate that pole and somebody else pick it up. So we're doing everything we can to keep everything open, but the golf course is open. Go out and enjoy it. It's a great way to be spread out. So I thank the community for your support and your diligence in this time of, of intense situation. But don't be afraid to get a little sunshine and enjoy our trails too. So thank you all.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a comment. I've seen you play golf and the areas you're in, there's very seldom any human contact.
Any, any. My grandkids laugh at me, but thanks Doug. Anything else from anybody?
Well, I, we got an email late this afternoon that I think if we didn't already share, the business call-in meeting for tomorrow morning, the DART, did we share that already? Because it seems like, it seems like that's an opportunity we might want to share with our local business owners to participate in that meeting tomorrow at eight thirty. Do either one of you want to provide more information about that?
Yeah, just let me pull up the details on it. Oh, thanks. So our Director of Business Innovation, Chelsea Rostie, has been working with Kate Adams and, and our DART crew with DOLA, Region 10, O Edit, the Workforce Center and, and the Office on Resiliency to come up with creative ways on how we can service our local businesses, especially the restaurants who have been the, the most impacted and bars and, and I talked to the theater representatives last night. And so we're trying to do the best we can and, and share ideas among all the business owners in our community and anyone else who's interested. Chelsea has set up a Zoom video conference that will take place every Wednesday morning at eight thirty and it'll only last thirty minutes, so people can just jump on quickly and then get back to their daily business. But we wanted to make sure that at least once a week, anything business-related in our community will be shared, any new things. And so tomorrow is the first one at eight thirty AM. And there's a, a notice of that that went out using a lot of different platforms today. So we had the Coffee Traders Customer Database and they allowed us to use that to distribute information. We used our sales tax vendor database to distribute information to business owners. We talked to nine seven oh VIP, the text system. When you go and, and shop at different businesses, you can enter your data to get the word out to all of those subscribers and a variety of other means, just different databases and listservs that we've had, the forum listserv and some others, to just get the word out to as many, and hopefully we hit thousands of people today. And we'll continue to send those things out to those groups, anybody interested in business. So tomorrow, the, on our website, you can, you can access the information to sign up for that. There's not really a call-in number because it's a Zoom. So you do have to have access to video conference on your computer. The camera right there will work and it's got all the procedures on how to sign up for that. So go on the website and pull that off if you're interested. And I think it's unlimited, the number of people who can participate. We are going to hear tomorrow definitely from Region 10 and they're going to talk to us about some of the programs they're offering or passing through from the state. We're going to have Chelsea sharing ideas, talking about how can we rally our community and our employers to create certain events in the community around lunch periods and evening dine-in events and evenings to get as many people eating at our restaurants with takeout or delivery as possible over the next several weeks. And so please tune into that. It's a really creative way to try to partner with our local businesses. And we have a lot of business owners who have given us some advice through the, the DART board members and our Economic Vitality Group and just other interested business owners who've called us to share ideas. And then we keep getting ideas from council members and members of the public. Just all day long, we've been getting a lot of ideas. So if you have any ideas and you're out there, share them with us. The other thing that I didn't mention is Chelsea's going to be pushing forward a Saturday-type event where every Saturday it's Montrose by local day kind of thing to get people encouraged to go out and shop here locally. Just because the governor issued the order to shut down sit-down activity in restaurants, it doesn't keep our retail shops from being open. And so you can go in and shop and get what you need and then, and then leave. You can go into coffee shops and pick up what you need and leave. You can go into the restaurant and pick up what you need and leave. It just means you can't sit there and congregate, but you can still be out and about and be a safe distance from people and get everything you need to get done out in the community. So please participate in that.
Can you address the next city council meeting and whether or not we might have a work session?
a work session? I don't know if you've made any decisions yet or how that's going to play out, but I, I know it's at the end of March instead of the usual time, which would be April 6th and 7th as Lisa mentioned, but.
Yeah, our understanding and from talking with council members is that we want to try to be business as usual as much as possible. And so we're planning on having work sessions and council meetings moving forward. We'll just have the call-in feature and the email feature for the public comments. We are allowing one representative from each of our media outlets to be here in person so they can get the firsthand knowledge and share that with their, their readers. But otherwise, just encourage people to attend, watch live stream, watch Channel 191, watch Elevate and then call in or, or email. But I don't see a reason and haven't heard from all of you that we would be canceling work sessions or council meetings. The only reason this last work session was coun- canceled is we only had two items on the agenda and it was right in the heat of the moment with not really knowing how we would structure this for public comment and those types of things. And so those two items didn't go away, they've just been postponed.
Right. So the next work session is Monday, March 30th at 11:00 AM and that'll be televised? Is that right?
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM, excuse me.
And you're probably asking because you're going to be out of town.
No, I'm not. I'm going to be here.
Oh, you're going to be here now?
Yeah, you can't travel. I can't travel.
You didn't tell me that yet, so that's great. That's good.
Yeah. And then, and then, and then city council is Tuesday like this, right here.
March 30th.
March 31st.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
And I'd like to end with thank you to the staff. Go ahead.
I'd like to also say how much I liked Chelsea's email that she sent today because it made me start thinking about some other things that I personally can do to keep from being totally bored with being home with my husband for however long this is going to be.
Go for a walk.
Let's be honest, yeah, I can go to, I can go to golf courses, I can go for a walk, I can do takeout foods. Somewhere I read in all of this, when you do go to the store, buy a game, buy a book, do something and just be proactive so that you just don't sit and fight.
I found out today, you don't want to try to rake leaves in the wind.
Oh, don't rake leaves. Okay.
I think some of our businesses are actually giving discounts on board games and those types of things. I read that on social media.
I just would like to thank staff. I know you guys have worked Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, just all kinds of hours to prepare our community so we can handle this situation to the best we can, help our businesses. But I really want to accolade all the city staff. You guys really, really have stepped up, worked hard. I think you have a, I know you have a great plan to help us all and I really, really appreciate it and I know all of council does, so thank you very, very much.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Elbow bump, elbow bump.